At twelve.
Oh, okay.
Mostly around twelve.
You're at Rogers?
Bit Bill.
Oh, Bit Bill.
Yeah.
My daughter-in-law started working at Bit Bill this year. Teacher.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think she's a teacher slash counselor. She's in Bit Bill now, but I'm gonna have her on the field. She spent all of her time in spring. Evidently, they didn't have an opening for any counselors. Or Bit Bill.
Oh, yeah.
I think she's at middle school.
That's her.
Hey, snuck up on you. Doing all right?
How are you, sir?
Good. How you doing?
Good.
My old career was at the high school.
Yeah, I'm only in high school.
Me?
Yeah. Shop?
Shop.
Got a lot of business tonight, so don't be shy. Let's get things moving.
Yeah, when I started to, I started it. Didn't change the. Manual logs, didn't change the location. Didn't change the workplace. It just keep changing.
Yeah, we got a ton of business tonight. We gotta hustle through it. Talked about it.
You were there?
Doing all right.
Yeah, it was all man, it was all paper.
All paper.
I had one class in college and it's all paper. Just one. It was for one project. It was kind of a relief thing in there. Before I actually did the final project.
Well, I, you know, before I got done, we had. My older boy, he didn't even do it too. He had a, he had a period off every day. And he seemed to, he was gonna go and sit in my office. And you know what? He taught himself. He taught himself. When I walked in there, he'd already been left sitting. And it doesn't work. It's kind of one thing to.
Change the. All money. Just cut it down to seven or two. There it is.
They don't.
Three D.
Where you work.
Live public hearings.
We'll get seven items. Do you ready, really?
No, no, no.
All right.
All right, if you turn on your microphones, point them in the proper direction there, we'll call this meeting ordered at six o'clock. If you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the day as it was, and thank you for the evening as you have prepared it for us. We ask you, Lord, to take care of us, watch over us, protect us, help us with this meeting, help us to make the right decisions, and help their citizens to understand those decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Okay, James Walker.
I'm here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Tony Kostarowski.
Here.
Frank Masivnik.
Here.
Brian Clark.
Here.
Michael Phillips. Michael Phillips is absent. Chase Henricks.
We're here.
And then we have Quorum.
All right, commissioners, you have the last board of zoning adjustments minutes in your packet there from November eighteenth. Unless there's any corrections needing to be made, I'll accept a motion to approve those as written.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a properly made motion. Roll call, please.
James Walker. All right, settle down. James Walker.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
Frank Masivnik.
Yes.
Brian Clark.
Yes.
And Michael Phillips is absent, Chase Henricks.
Yes.
The minutes of November eighteen, twenty twenty-four, as written, are approved.
All right, we have five items of new business tonight, all of them require a public hearing. So we'll start with the Criterion Energy, looking for a variance, off-street parking and loading at one thirteen South Lincoln Street. So, someone here representing that tonight? Come right on up, give us your name and address, and tell us what we're looking for tonight.
Adi Manzi with Bates and Associates here for the Criterion Energy. Um, yes, so with this one, we are proposing that we are requesting a variance for the paving. Uh, this is for the paving areas, paving loading areas, paving parking as well.
All right, so you're looking to be freed from that requirement?
Correct.
And you wanted to add more gravel to the parking area instead?
Yeah, so the main issue is, but if we were to place any kind of asphalt, the larger trucks, um, would cause the asphalt to, um, just deteriorate over time pretty quickly, and so that's why we're trying to reduce that by just proposing that gravel instead.
All right, if you'd step back for just a moment, we have a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak either for or against the granting of this variance tonight, we'd love to hear your opinion. We'll open up the public hearing here at six oh three. Please come forward if you'd like to speak. All right, seeing none, did we get any response at City Hall from anyone? All right, we'll close at six oh four, come right back up, please. And I'll turn it over to the board members here, commissioners.
Is this for everything behind the drive apron?
Yes, that is correct.
How would you accomplish your handicap parking?
So, apologies, that was actually a miss- uh, misspoke. Um, the, the handicap parking will be paved, um, that will be the one thing that will be paved. Um, I believe that is on the southern side right there, as well as that ramp that will be paved. Uh, so it looks like just a couple of the parking spaces up on the east side would be the portion that is within that gravel parking.
All right. Other questions?
You guys were looking at asphalt for this, is correct?
Correct.
I, I struggle with trying to approve this immediately because you could either change the concrete or increase your thickness. That's, that's kind of how I'm viewing this, I don't know that I can support this variance request.
Yeah, I, I think the difficulty is that I drive all over town and see trucks on asphalt and concrete parking lots that seem to do fine.
All right, other questions, other clarifications?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the variance request.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the variance. Roll call, please.
Did we do it? We did, what time did you do the, um?
That was six oh three to six oh four. Yes, we did the public.
It was a slate.
No, good, good double check, though.
Who did the second?
Uh, Mr. Henricks.
Got it. Ready?
Yep.
Frank Masivnik?
Yes.
Chase Henricks?
No.
Brian Clark?
No.
James Walker?
No.
Tony Kostarowski?
No.
And Darren Brock?
No.
Motion to approve the Criterion Energy variance from Access Management Off-Street Parking and Loading is not approved.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, the next item of business, if I can get back up there to the top. Uh, this is another public hearing, this is at one zero zero five North Bloomington, Phase Two, and looking for some variance from Access Management Standards. We have someone representing that, come on up, give us your name and address, let us know, uh, what we're looking for tonight.
Good evening, my name is James Koch. I'm the project engineer for the, uh, premise investment project at this address on Bloomington. The variance is, um, to allow for a shortened throat length on the north drive entrance on the property. Uh, this was something that, uh, the reviewing engineer and staff recommended that we change it from where the middle access is for ingress and egress into the site, to encourage that to happen at the north end of the site, uh, along the, uh, new building, building number two. That's a one-way drive aisle in front of that building. Um, so vehicles would be able to enter and drive along the front of building two, and then exit at about the midpoint of this, uh, one point four acre parcel of land. Um, there's a small parking area on the north end of the site where cars can, um, park and exit from that north exit as well. But, um, it's shorter than forty feet, that's why we're having a, a variance, uh, request.
Right, yeah, forty feet is what's required by code, so. So we're looking for smaller than that, so.
Yeah, and we concur with, uh, staff's recommendation, it, it is a more desirable, um, way to allow cars to enter and exit the site. Um, uh, it's just that it didn't meet that forty foot, so whenever we originally had the site designed, um, we made it work with, um, those standards being met with that middle access point. Um, but during the review, it was, uh, suggested that we try and do that and pursue the variances, and that's why we're doing that tonight.
All right, if you'd step back just a moment, we do have a public hearing on this, we'll open it up at six oh eight. And if anyone would like to speak either for or against the granting of this variance, uh, to allow a smaller access to the property on the north entrance, please come up this time, we'd be happy to hear your opinion, so. All right, any comments, receive the city hall, all right, six oh nine, we'll close that. Come back up, sir, please, if you don't mind, and I'll open it up to the commissioners.
Does our city engineer want to speak to their part in this?
Yeah, so their original concept had that angled parking face the other way, so that anybody who entered and turned north or left as you're looking at it, would have to make a really hard turn to queue and exit. And our opinion, it was better circulation to put that one-way parking and go the other way, so it queued better and they have better access. You wouldn't have queue traffic blocking somebody from entering the site.
So we're basically looking at changing the, uh, the access width to help direct traffic in a flow?
No, it's not the width, it's the depth.
Oh, the depth, all right, 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 the depth.
And so with this particular configuration, if a vehicle, um, didn't have forty feet like it's shown here,
Gotcha.
they could still pull into the site, um, there's plenty of space for the vehicle, uh, to get into the site safely and not impede traffic on the highway. Um, it's just that the way that the, uh, code is written, design standards, um, are.
If you went in forty feet, it would.
That's correct, you know, and so we're a little shorter than that, um, but, um, based on the reviewing engineer staff and, and our preferences too, um, this is just a, a much more, um, user-friendly way, safer way to get vehicles in and out of the site, um, as long as we can get that variance approved.
So on Bloomington, where would a tractor trailer go if they entered the property there?
Well, that's a great question. Um, I don't think that, um, you know, we've intended this particular access point to be for, um, full-size, um, semi-trucks to enter the site. But if you look at the midpoint of the site, which was approved in Phase One, there is a lot more, uh, space available for a larger vehicle to enter that site. Um, so they can get in, pick up the dumpster, um, uh, or other service vehicles can enter for loading and unloading at that location for both buildings, so. Um, but a, but a full-size semi-truck with a forty-foot trailer or bigger, um, that, um, is something that's not intended for access on this particular site design. Um, but, but we do have, um, the access design standards met, uh, for, um, both phases of this project.
Okay.
I'm sorry if you already said this, how short of forty is it going to be?
Well, I would have to look, and that depends on where the measurements are taken from. Uh, it's certainly less than forty. Um, so depending on how you measure it, um, it could be between, um, you know, twenty to forty, something like that, but it's definitely less, so I don't want to tell you a number here and, um, you know, restate that. It might be in the application, I don't have that pulled up here in front of me, but, um, um, it's definitely less than forty feet.
That second dash red, red line there is a twenty-five foot utility easement, correct? So that's kind of a reference point of the direct offset from the right-of-way.
Um, yeah, that's a building setback line.
Okay, building setback, not an easement, my apologies, so. To, to their point, so that forty foot's usually kind of measured right at the turn, and it's, it's a safety, correct me if I'm over, if I'm speaking incorrectly, Mr. Jost, but it's a safety-type guideline, it helps to allow a car or two to have some stacking if they come to the site, and it's blocked. In the site, the realistic chances of somebody being blocked there, they can either go straight in, or if they want to turn down that one-way aisle, um, you know, if you're coming and headed, I guess if you're northbound on Bloomington, it's a sharp right turn back to you, so you're gonna be slowing down to make that maneuver anyway.
Right, that's right.
Um, and southbound would have the opportunity to sit and watch until a clearing comes in, if that comes around.
Yes, sir, that's right.
I think the shape of the property does definitely qualify it under the letter of the law. Being unique in such a way that strict enforcement of the code might cause an undue hardship.
Right, yeah, the narrowing of the property at that end kind of forces an issue there, so. All right, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the variance.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second, we have a motion probably made, second, yeah, approve the variance, roll call, please.
Frank Masivnik?
Yes.
Chase Henricks?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
James Walker?
Yes.
Tony, Tony Kostarowski?
Yes.
And Darren Brock?
Yes.
Motion to approve, ten oh five North Bloomington, Phase Two, variance from Access Management Standards is approved.
All right, our third item of business, also requiring a public hearing, is, uh, Mr. James Morrison at seventeen sixteen Billy Acres. Come on up and tell us what we're looking for this evening.
Yeah, my name is James Morrison, our property is located at seventeen sixteen Billy Acres Place, and we're seeking a variance to the, to the accessory dwelling code, uh, section sixteen one ninety-nine. We would like to, uh, have a approximately nine-foot variance to allow the front of the house a little bit farther up on where our existing structure is. We're building a, uh, a mother-in-law suite for my wife and I.
All right, and how big is this piece of property, by the way?
Um.
Approximately?
It's nine, point nine acres.
Point nine acres?
Mm-hmm.
So just short of an acre size?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you would step back just a moment, so we have a public hearing on this item. We'll open it up here at, uh, six sixteen, if anyone would like to speak either for or against the granting of this variance to allow a, a second accessory building, second building on the property, please come forward. All right, any feedback received at City Hall? All right, we'll close the public hearing, six sixteen, come right back up, please, sir. All right, I'll open it up to the commissioners. Any questions?
For staff, the, the nine-foot, that's from the rear facade of the building, of the existing structure?
Yes, so it's gonna be basically the front porch encroaching on the.
Okay.
Are all other setbacks and distances being met? It looked awfully close in one of the photos we had to the fence line.
I, uh, what the plan for submitted, the only thing that fell outside of our normal exceptions was that the front of the auxiliary home was not going to be behind the rear facing of the existing home. We were gonna let it move forward a little bit into the side yard. Otherwise, the other distances all fell within the requirements of that zone.
Okay.
Yeah, and the reason being, there's this existing trees on this lot, and so that house is sitting in front of those existing trees.
What's the condition of the trees, are they in good health?
I'm sorry?
The condition of the existing trees that you're trying to save, are they in good health?
Uh, there's a couple of them that I'm probably gonna take down, they're, they're, for whatever reason, have died, and the rest of them are all good, the big trees are in good shape.
Okay.
How far will the proposed rear of this secondary dwelling be from the closest tree?
Well, we, we, uh, when we found out about the, where we needed to put it, we moved the, we had planned a, a patio and cover deck on the back of the house. We moved, we removed that, and now we're about sixteen feet from the biggest tree from the back of the house. Which then the biggest one is the closest.
Okay.
All right, other questions?
So if the, if the tree or trees were removed, then the house, the, the secondary house could be moved back far enough so that this wouldn't be an issue, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the thing is, in our land state code, we as a city encourage to preserve existing.
Please. Especially if they're in good condition as they, as they're describing. Seems reasonable. From the, the sketch, to me, you know, it, it may not be by the letter of the code to the rear of the home, but it'd still be behind the front facade.
Yeah.
But I don't really have a big issue with this one.
Any other questions, or someone like to make a motion?
Uh, a question, so.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm completely off-base here, but aren't, aren't there two variances here? Because isn't the shed one structure, and now this is a second structure?
No, there are now two accessories.
Oh, two accessories, thank you.
Nice clarification, though, thank you, sir. So we just have the variance of the front of the house encroaching nine feet closer than it is allowed.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
All right.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a second, Mr. Walker, roll call, please.
Frank Masivnik?
Yes.
Chase Henricks?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
James Walker?
Yes.
Tony Kostarowski?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
And motion to approve James Morrison variance, accessory building requirements is approved.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, our next public hearing, our next item is for Laramie Estates, this is the low drainage manual requirements. Come right on up, give us your name and address, tell us what we're looking at with this one.
Hello, Blake Murray with Craft and Toll, I'm the project manager on this one. This is actually before y'all, what, two months ago, for four other variances on this one. Uh, a large part of these variances stem from us trying to meet a new code that's not yet been adopted. Um, last time was before you, it was the lot size, uh, this, the, the lot width and setbacks, the, uh, the street section that we were using, and then on-street parking, turning those perpendicular rather than typical on-street parking, so. After diving into this a little bit more with city, uh, city engineer on this one, uh, we have two remaining variances. Um, both of these kind of came within the last couple of weeks, and we've been kind of working back and forth on this, turning in, uh, variance requests and everything. The first one is, uh, variance to the low drainage manual requirements. Typically, uh, two, two-foot of cover is required, we have less than that on top of our storm pipes. When I originally wrote this variance, my, my coworker, uh, Conley, when he wrote this, there were seven requests, seven that did not conform. I went back this morning with him and we looked at it, we got rid of five of those, we turned them into horizontal elliptical pipes, uh, we dropped inverts down where we could. There's two remaining ones, and I'll, I'll cite them, um, as the one in the northeast corner of the site, uh, that drains to the northeast pond. There's just simply not enough cover in that area to, to get it, the pipe is very large that's draining to it. We have around a foot of cover, I believe, just going off memory. Um, the only solution to it would be something absurd like three or four different pipes there to, to get the additional twelve inches, and so that's, that's one of the two, uh, requests with this variance, the other one, we have a subdivision at the south of us that, uh, has a pond that drains to our site. We're picking up that water, it's not an insignificant amount of water, uh, so it needed larger pipes to be able to convey that water. Uh, the southern end of our site unfortunately has less topography at play, so, uh, we're kind of held on the elevation from there pond, and we're held on the elevation, uh, at the other end of the site, in an attempt to try to not point discharge, and we have level spreaders and riprap and all of those, all of those things, but the pipe size needed versus the topography, we just have less than a foot of cover, so. That's the two requests with this, uh, storm drain variance. Happy to answer your questions.
And that is the updated packet you have found at your seats there, commissioners. The update, uh, cutting it down from the previous number requested down to just two instead of seven. I will say we appreciate you finding ways to, to meet the code without requiring variances, but let's talk about these two variances that's being requested. If you hold back just a moment, let me open up a public hearing at, uh, six twenty-three, we'll open that. And if anyone would like to speak either for or against the granting of this variance, uh, please come to the microphone. All right, seeing no one, any comments at City Hall? All right, nothing received, six twenty-four, we'll close that. Come right back up, please, sir. All right, questions?
Still intending to do the Class Four pipe?
Yes, sir, everywhere we have less than a foot, we'll do Class Four. Or, sorry, less than the two feet.
Yeah, yeah.
So, not being an engineer, or even pretending, uh, I can only assume that the two-foot of cover is to protect the integrity of the pipes, is that accurate, or is there another reason?
The Class Four pipe, uh, is a stronger pipe than the standard, so it's, it's more costly to do that.
So that makes up for, in our opinion, the, the lack of cover?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Looking at the provided drawings that they gave us, the Class Four going to elliptical, they've lowered some of their slopes, which were already flat-ish prior to that. They've made several adjustments without essentially bringing in a bunch of additional fill, which I think would honestly, one, it changes. one, it changes the whole site design, and two, it, it is kind of a adding additional hardship on them. I, these, these two sec, segments, getting it from seven to two seems reasonable to me.
Right, and they are dealing with down gravity, you gotta have so much slope to drain anyway. So, without raising a bunch of property, I understand what you're saying. All right, any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
Make a motion to accept the variance.
Okay, so we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the variance. Roll call, please.
Chase Henricks?
Yes.
James Walker?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Frank Musivnik?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Laramie Estates variance from the low drainage manual requirements is approved.
All right, thank you very much. The next one is the same property, uh, same person here. This is, uh, also requires a public hearing, but, uh, describe the second variance, sir.
Certainly, second variance is for, you can see it there, it's highlighted in, in red. Uh, it's, is this area here between the alley and that existing subdivision to the west? I'm drawing blank on the name of that subdivision, I don't know if you all know. Um, apologies, I should've, should've had that. Uh, again, this, this is stuff we haven't dealt with in the past, not when we didn't have alley-loaded subdivisions. I mean, typically, we would have fronted these on the street, not had the alley, and this variance wouldn't have been needed. Again, we caught this at the twelfth hour. Basically, code states they want a ten-foot landscaped buffer between our development, uh, and any impervious surface and the adjacent development. The initial thought was, hey, this is a good idea still, uh, even though we're changing the code, and, and maybe this won't look exactly the same here in a couple of months when the code's rewritten. But the initial thoughts were, hey, there's gonna be cars driving down this alley. We don't want headlights getting into the backyards of these people's, uh, you know, houses and everything. We did shift the alley to where we have five foot of separation. We don't have the ten, so it's not really big enough for the trees that the code is, is wanting. There's an existing fence there, and it does have existing trees. Uh, I totally get the intent, we're, we're willing to be flexible and, and try, uh, to, to plant some of those tall bushes or something like that, to try to mitigate some of the light impact. But I really don't think there's gonna be light impact with a six-foot privacy fence and, and trees, is, is my personal opinion. You know, unfortunately, I think if, if the, if we didn't get this variance, we'd probably have to lose that alley and front-load those houses, those houses onto the street, which, I know we're all trying to meet this new intent of this zoning code, which is predominantly alley-loaded because of the electrical issues that we've had. Uh, and so that's where this has been, been driven from, but we would be widening the lots if we didn't get this alley to, uh, to build our, our housing product that we're looking for. And that would, that would really be the only solution, so that's kinda where we're at, is, you know, we're happy to plant some, some of those big bush trees. I'm sorry, I don't have a green thumb, I don't know the name of those big tall, uh, bushes, uh, that grow almost looking like trees. But that way, it's not, you know, going over our, our neighbor's fence, um, but it is providing some sort of canopy, um, as additional, try, trying to meet the intent of code, at least, I guess, is where I'm going with that. Happy to answer any questions.
And there's already an existing fence there?
Yes, sir. It's actually trees, too, I don't know if the picture made it into the packet or not, um, let me see. I can pass this around if you'd like to see it, the picture of it. So there's some very mature trees there, and fence for that subdivision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Y'all here, is it?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Please.
Okay, so we're talking about this border right here?
Yes, sir, so there's some very large trees here, you can see there's a little gap there, and that'd be a place to plant. And that's why I think, you know, adding some tall, those, those bush tree things.
Okay, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
All right, if you step back just a moment, let me open up the public hearing on this. We'll open it up here at six twenty-nine. So if anyone would like to speak either granting or refusing this variance, uh, please come to the microphone. We'd love to hear from you. All right, seeing no one, any feedback received at City Hall? Nope, all right. Six thirty, we'll close the public hearing, thank you, sir. All right, questions, clarifications, comments?
How wide was the wild, uh, the alley again?
The alley, um, is eleven feet wide.
Eleven feet. It's a, adjacent, I guess, to the east of it, if I remember correctly, there's a, an easement as well?
I believe so, I believe there's overhead electric there.
It's overhead?
I think so.
Will it remain overhead for this development?
Sorry, say that again?
Will it remain overhead for the development, or for?
I think it's right on the lot line, I think it's on our neighbor's, I'm going off memory, though, I'm gonna have to look real quick.
Looking at the plans earlier, I thought the, there was a twenty-foot easement, I guess, within the lot, if you will, between the, the alley and the, the neighbor property.
Oh, um, yes, that goes from our property line onto our lots to provide all the franchise utilities.
Is there any, is twenty foot required, I guess, for that, or is it necessary for all the franchises?
That's the intent on the alley lots down there, that's actually SWEPCO, and the electric will be in the rear of the lots there. Typically, where the electric is, you have all the franchise.
I, I don't wanna design your plans, uh, the reason I'm asking is, would fifteen work, and then we could move the, the alley five additional feet? Or is that, are they gonna need all twenty?
The problem will end up being, then you only have fifteen feet for a driveway, uh, 'cause the house would have to get either smaller, or, you know.
Makes sense, yeah.
It's pretty optimized, uh, like I said, really, our, our two options are the, the variance or to get rid of that alley just in general, and front-load those, so, uh, we noticed at the end, and we're like, well, it depends with what the city really wants. I mean, I, I think the goal is to alley-load a lot of these, but we might need a little help on this one.
All right. And the intent is to also plant at least some sort of shrubs or something along that five-foot buffer?
I go, I'm, I'm on the record, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll do that.
Just educate me if I'm wrong, but one other option would be cutting one of those properties out and, and making all of the lots wider and less deep, correct?
Um, yes, sir, and that's what I was saying with the alleys, if, if this wasn't approved, we'd get rid of the alley. We'd make the lots sixty feet wide, kinda like we do on some of these external ones that don't have the alleys. Um, and then they would just front onto, uh, Timeless Avenue. Gets a little weird, 'cause some of the ones to the east of there are alley-loaded, some, the ones to the south are alley-loaded, so then it's kind of, the, the look's a little jarring, right? You, you have most of those rally-loaded, and then you have these that aren't, so.
So the purpose of this, then, keeps the electrical running along the back of the property line, instead of the electric being out front of the property line?
It, it will, in fact, it, it will do that. I mean, if we get rid of the alley, then, then, uh, SWEPCO will.
SWEPCO will be in the front yards.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
Where are we at on the large-scale process on this?
They're asking to amend the agenda and add it to the agenda at P C.
Today.
Today.
So we haven't approved yet.
Well, these, these are the last two items on the tech plat.
Gotcha. So, I'll go back with my question one more time. If, uh, rather than striking the alley, if you simply made the properties less deep, and kept the alley there, then you could meet the requirements of the code by potentially cutting out one of those properties, losing a house?
Uh, potentially, I mean, that, uh, the lots are a hundred and thirty-four foot deep there, so, I mean, there's some potential wiggle room. It just comes down to their ultimate footprint that they're trying to build, so. I, I hate to, they're not here tonight, or else I'd let them speak on that, on what floor plans they're planning to use and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? All right?
I will say that lot one seventy-eight is at a ninety-three foot, um, depth plus the twelve out front, so it's closer to the hundred foot, hundred and five foot buildable depth, so not sure if that will help that lot, for example, as you get near the cul-de-sac.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
If no one else has anything, I'll make a motion.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, I move to approve.
And Mr. Walker, you're seconding? All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded, roll call, please.
Chase Henricks?
Yes.
James Walker?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Frank Musivnik?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
Motion to approve Laramie Estates variance from the low drainage manual requirements is approved.
Thank you all for being so flexible, just trying to work through the code, we, we really do appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right, that concludes our new business, we have no old business, no rulings of staff decisions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the board of zoning adjustment meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we will close the board of zoning adjustments meeting and immediately go into the planning commission meeting.
At thirty-six P M.
At six thirty-six. All right, roll call, please. As soon as you're ready.
James Walker?
Yes, I'm here, I mean.
Brian Clark?
Yes, I'm here.
Here.
That's what you're saying.
Thank you. Frank Musivnik?
Here.
Uh, Tony Kozarowski?
Here.
Michael Phillips is not here. Markie Madsen, Darren Brock?
Here.
And Chase Henricks?
Here.
Okey-do, we have four of them.
All right, before we get started on the agenda, we've had a request, uh, to add the Laramie Estates tech plat review to, to our new business. If, uh, if I could have a motion to make that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, we'll do this by voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that'll be item G under new business then.
Laramie Estates four.
Uh, tech plat review.
Thank you.
So it'll be item G. Okay, you have the minutes of our December second planning commission meeting in your packet. If there are no corrections needing made, I'll accept a motion to approve those as written.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
James Walker?
Yes.
Frank Musivnik?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
And Chase Henricks?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December second, night, twenty twenty-four as written are approved.
All right, thank you. At this time, we have our public forum, this is where we just open up the microphone for the public to bring anything to our attention that you feel we need to know about. This is not the public hearing that we do have on the agenda later, but it's just on any item, so we'll open it up here at six thirty-eight. All right, seeing no one coming, we'll close public forum. Now, we have no items of old business, but now we have seven of new business. We'll start with Bishop Vineyards Phase Three preliminary plat. Come right on up, give us your name, address, and tell us what we're looking at this evening.
Uh, Victor Alpetto with Craft and Toll, um, yeah, we have Bishop three, a continuation of Bishop one and two. Fifty-one lots over twelve acres and gravity sewer connecting, uh, to the south.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
Staff's happy with it?
All right, you have the paperwork in your packet there, so.
There's no variances or anything like that, correct?
Variances, um, no.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat. Roll call, please.
James Walker?
Yes.
Frank Musivnik?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
And Chase Henricks?
Yes.
Motion to approve Bishop Vineyards Phase Three Laramie Plat is approved.
All right. All right, our next item is Primus Investments, this is at one zero zero five North Bloomington Street. This is the large-scale development. Right on up, this may sound familiar to you, commissioners?
My name's James Koch, I'm the project engineer for the large-scale development for Primus Investments. Uh, this is phase two of, uh, the project. Uh, they're adding about six thousand square feet with this new building, the associated parking and other side improvements that go along with it. I think, uh, building one is, um, essentially complete. Uh, there's been, uh, quite a lot of other, uh, items that, uh, have been required sidewalk, and a water main was extended to the site, uh, that's nearing final completion with spring no water utilities. Um, this is just to finish out the, uh, commercial development of the site.
All right. I'll open up commissioners for questions.
Some and all comments have been addressed, staff's happy again. I move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the large scale. Roll call, please.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
Frank Musivnik?
Yes.
James Walker?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
And Chase Henricks?
Yes.
Motion to approve Primus Investments Large Scale Development is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next, we have Vic Enterprises, this is another large-scale development at four-ten McClure Avenue. Come right on up, give us your name, address, tell us what we're looking at this evening.
Howdy, I'm Chaz Russo, representing ESI, uh, for a large-scale development at four-ten McClure. This is gonna be a mixed-use building with one office and eleven units. This project was previously approved, I believe, back in twenty twenty-two, uh, and now we are just seeking reapproval for the same project, essentially with a few minor changes.
All right. I'll open it up, commissioners?
Yeah, it probably, this was an approved large scale, and they did make a few minor adjustments with the code, you know, was changed.
Gotcha.
After approval, and since they hadn't constructed it, and they brought up the code, and it doesn't expire within twelve months, they haven't filled, uh, what they were waiting on is the sewer, so that's kind of what's put the delay in the project.
That's understandable. Yes, I know we've seen this before, so, they said it just expired, and made the necessary adjustments for the code changes in that period of time, looking for approval once again.
Was the fee in lieu for drainage part of the previous, or is that something that was changed with this one?
Uh, that is changed with this one. It used to be, I believe, perennial pavers, and now they're proposing, uh, fee in lieu.
Staff's happy with the fee in lieu? We've come to a settled number and are willing to accept that versus, uh, some sort of storage?
With fee in lieu, it's included in the drainage?
It is, okay.
For drainage management, it is?
For the fee in lieu?
Mm-hmm.
There is an option for the, the cost of fee in lieu versus the drainage, um, just it, depends on the site itself. The engineers both, they review the plans, um, on the drainage prior to the approval, and make sure that it meets drainage requirements, or if they're good, accepting the fee in lieu.
Okay.
The lower in the basin, the more likely it is that we're gonna approve that, um, just depends where it is and what it could endanger, additional runoff. We don't think there's any threat of additional runoff causing a problem here, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
All right, any other questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly made and seconded to approve the large scale. Roll call, please.
Brian Clark?
Yes.
Tony Kozarowski?
Yes.
Frank Musivnik?
Yes.
Chase Henricks?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
James Walker?
Yes.
I get everybody? Okay, a motion to approve Vic Enterprises Large Scale Development is approved.
All right. Item D is Criterion Energy. Item D is Criterion Energy, this is a large scale development as well, at one thirteen South Lincoln Street. Who we have on the one thirteen South Lincoln? Did they leave?
Yeah, I was adding, but I didn't mean to.
They didn't mean to leave?
Yeah, yeah, they left.
I was saying, we just gave a variance on this property, or looked at a variance, but we didn't, yeah.
They were just looking for a variance to, to not pay.
Right, that was denied, but.
But this would have approved other contingency or taking, we can't take, we'll just, and I can let them go, pick them next.
Can we, before we make?
How do you feel about it?
Can we move forward with it, with?
Without them being?
Without variance?
Yeah, you can, you could approve another contingency that they made.
Right, yeah.
Pretty much like we did there, and the staff, we just won't stamp the plans unless that's on.
Yeah, yeah, we can approve it with.
But as of now, I mean, I think we can just have a party.
Yeah, that would be the only thing that would change, is that it would need to be paved, since they were not granted the variance, but otherwise, we can approve that, if we so choose this evening. And allow them to move forward, as long as they.
It saves time doing it that way.
It saves time, you know. And if they need changes, they'll have to bring it back, I guess, but if they're willing to pave it, and we approve it as is, it can move forward.
I know I suggested that, but I, I think I flipped sides. Let's do it right.
Having the applicant here.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to table.
Yeah, we need a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
Who makes the motion?
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Tony, not the end of the table, huh?
I'm in.
I did.
Okay, guys, Clark, you made the motion?
Correct.
You made this, Brian, you made this.
And Tony's seconding.
Tony's seconding, I got it, I got it. Okay, you ready?
Yeah.
Frank Musivnik.
Yes.
Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
Brian Clark.
Yes.
James Walker.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
And Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
All right, it's passed, motion to table has passed.
All right, so that's been tabled until the next meeting.
Until next meeting, yes.
Okay, the next item we have is a conditional use permit for seventeen sixteen billion acres place, this will require a public hearing as well, so if you come on up, let us know what we're looking for with this conditional use permit.
We're seeking a conditional use permit to build a auxiliary dwelling for my wife and I at seventeen sixteen billion acres place.
All right, this does require a public hearing, so if you'd step back for just a moment, let me open that up, and one more time, so at six forty-eight, we'll have a public hearing over the granting of this conditional use permit at seventeen sixteen billion acres. Anyone like to speak? All right, any comments received at City Hall? All right, we have checked, we'll close it at six forty-nine, all right, step back up, please, sir. All right, so does this require conditional use because it's a second residence on the property?
Accessory dwelling units are permitted for code with a conditional use permit and are one zone.
Okay.
For immediate family members.
For immediate family members or workers.
Okay. So it's allowed with a conditional use permit, and that's why we find ourselves here this evening, so. Any questions about it? Anything you need clarified?
Just for staff, or question, so if the property's sold?
They would have to do a track split in order to celebrate that property. Yeah, and I asked the city county how they would be addressing, and they said, similar to the apartment, what they do to that shape.
To clarify something you just said, if it was sold, but the entire family, including the applicants, were moving out, it wouldn't have to be track split at that time, it could be, would it? Only if the applicant wanted to stay in, it was a non-relative living, okay, I wanted to verify that.
Right, okay, got it. But then, there's not enough.
Then there's all kinds of other issues.
Yeah, there's not enough room between the two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, but your accessory dwelling code requires the separation between your accessory buildings and your primary structures, and it's definitely part of your property line.
Seems unlikely, honestly.
It becomes a mother-in-law quarters in perpetuity.
In gen, most likely, or father-in-law.
All right, any other questions or clarifications? Are we ready for a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly made, seconded, to approve, roll call, please.
Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
He's not here, Frank Musivnik.
Yes.
James Walker.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Brian Clark.
Yes.
And Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
Motion to approve the conditional use permit is approved.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, our next item is the Land Development Code Amendment, this requires a public hearing as well, this is on sidewalks, so what are we looking at here?
I've gotten similar to the last time, this is another portion of the code that I found, the sidewalks did not meet our current spec, and this was still in the old code. Current sidewalk specs are five foot sidewalk, six foot print space, so I'm just going through the code, finding places that need to be revised. Looked at, recommended some more language changes there, as far as bringing the sidewalk closer to the current, you know, if it's not approved, that would be sixteen.
Okay, so, basically, we're looking at a lot of housekeeping here, to keep everything in compliance with each other, and not conflict each other, right? All right, and again, this is a recommendation for approval to be sent to the city councils, this is the code amendment, so we are we're voting into for or against recommending approval to the council. Any questions on this? If there's no questions, I'll accept a motion to recommend approval.
Do we do the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, you, thank you, keep me honest there. Hold on, we have a public hearing on this, it's six fifty-three, so if anyone would like to speak about this change that we're looking to make with the Land Development Code Amendment?
Yeah, let it go.
All right, seeing no one rushing, we'll close that, all right, we've had the public hearing, thank you, Tony. All right, now, I'll accept a motion to recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
Frank Musivnik.
Yes.
James Walker.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Brian Clark.
Yes.
And Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve the Land Development Code Amendment, section sixteen dash two fifty-nine sidewalks is approved.
All right, our last item of business is added to our agenda this evening, this is for Laramie Estates Tech Plat Review, come right back on up to our microphone, sir.
Hello, Blake Murray with the Craft and Toll. I bring before you Laramie Estates after six variances, here she is in all her glory, there are a hundred and eighty-nine buildable lots, hundred and ninety-four total lots, two phases, we have fifty-three parking spaces perpendicular to the streets for those variances next to the open spaces. Lot seventy-nine's a large open space park area, we have two detention ponds. We have a raised intersection at Midnight and Oak Avenue, it extends that road from the south, the subdivision to the south of us, which I think y'all just heard the plat for, all the way up north to our northern property line in accordance with the master street plan. It's got public street, improvement shown to Honeysuckle, divided entrance at Hayden and Honeysuckle, which kind of matches the aesthetic of Cambridge subdivision across the street. There are some slightly longer blocks than we typically design with subdivisions, and so, kind of, what we worked through with staff, was some mid-block crossings for traffic calming, those are going to be raised, raised crossings, to provide some connectivity to the open space park area was kind of the, kind of the goal of that, so. Water and service served by Springdale Water, working through all of those downstream capacity issues right now, there's there's obviously things that need to be upgraded, but there's, there's, there's no issues right now with what we're proposing with Springdale Water, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
All right, questions, this is the preliminary plat, we'll see it again.
Is the intent with those mid-block crossings towards the green space, I think it's, you said Lot seventy-eight, maybe? Are you going to be able to, if I'm a pedestrian on there, will you be able to walk between the homes, or is it? Is it just a mid-block crossing and a traffic calming aspect of that?
I think it's more of the traffic, sorry, I think it's more of the traffic calming aspect of it, the setbacks are shown at five feet right now, so theoretically, you could do it, I don't know if they want that or not. I wish they were here tonight, but unfortunately not, but at least, if nothing else, it's for traffic calming, and there's one along Oak. There is one along Bejeweled as well, I think those are, oh, and sorry, and Enchanted, so we have three of them, it looks like.
All right.
Sorry, that was just more of a curious question than it is anything.
Sure. Anything else, any other questions for it? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
I think we should approve.
Second.
All right, we have second, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Tony Kostarowski.
Yes.
And Chase Hendricks.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
And Frank Musivnik.
Yes.
James Walker. And Brian Clark.
Yes.
Laramie State, Laramie Review, approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next meeting is scheduled next year sometime.
Just around the corner.
January sixth is our, is our next scheduled. There we go, January sixth, no discussions, no committee reports, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned, wow, we got that in less than an hour, that's impressive.
That is, I'm glad.
Two meetings, twelve items, all together, five minutes.
Yeah.
Less than five minutes per hour? That's pretty good.